I'll bring this meeting to order. Good evening. We're the Eugene Planning Commission, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing on appeal of the hearings official's decision to approve a zone change from GO to C2 for Looking Glass School Course, City File Z11-3. At this point, I'd like to introduce the planning -- or let the planning commissioners introduce themselves.
Lisa Warnes.
Randy Ledig.
Eddie Barley.
Jeff Mills.
John Belcher.
Rick Duncan.
Bill Randall.
Before I begin the hearing, I'd like to briefly go over the hearing procedure. The decision of the Planning Commission on this appeal is quasi-judicial. It's quasi-judicial, so we will have quasi-judicial format for this public hearing in accordance with applicable code requirements. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the appeal before us. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed toward the appeal issues and relevant criteria. No new evidence pertaining to appeal issues can be accepted by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission can only accept argument and analysis related to evidence that is already in the record. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to staff. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the application, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the application. At the end of testimony, we will ask for any staff responses, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for final rebuttal. I'm also supposed to remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and the parties to respond will preclude further appeal on that issue. Before we begin, Eugene Code 9.7065 requires that planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or biases, abstentions, or challenges to impartiality. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Commissioner Randall.
I have a direct financial interest and will be recusing myself from this hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Now, staff will provide a brief staff report before we begin testimony.
Oh, thank you. My name's Steve Oakes with City of Eugene Planning. So, tonight's hearing is on the appeal of a zone change for Z11-3. The application was approval for Looking Glass School from GO General Office to C2 Community Commercial on a property located at 1662 West 12th Avenue. The subject property is approximately 1.1 acres in size and developed with an existing commercial building and related parking. The applicable criteria for a zone change are found at EC 9.8865 and include the transportation planning rule criteria. The Eugene hearings official held a public hearing for the subject application on July 13th, 2011. The hearings official issued his decision approving the request on August 4th, 2011. On August 16th, 2011, an appeal of the hearings official decision was filed by Paul Conte on behalf of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors. As you may have heard, we once postponed the hearing in hopes that an agreement could be reached between parties, and subsequently, an agreement between parties has been reached. This agreement includes adding two conditions of approval to the zone change. These are included in Section 3 of the draft final order, which is found on page 2 of the -- excuse me, actually, I'm on the wrong page. It may be found on page 8 of the agenda packet. It's on the very last page. These conditions provide that once Looking Glass no longer occupies the site, the zoning rule revert to GO General Office. And both parties support this application. I've also placed at your seats, there was a letter from Paul Conte that was received today on behalf of Jefferson Westside Neighbors, and it's also the one I forwarded in email earlier today. And Emily Drum is also here to answer any questions you may have about the application. And as agreed to by the parties, staff fully supports the draft final order with the conditions. And unless there are questions from the Planning Commission at this time, this concludes staff's presentation.
Commissioner Duncan. Just one, for the record, you referred to both parties agree. Would you just state who those parties were?
The parties were the applicant and appellant, which is in disguise with the Jefferson Westside Neighbors.
Thank you.
Just clarification on that, Steve. The applicant and the owner are two different parties, aren't they?
Correct.
Is the owner amenable to this as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
As you clarify, there are actually three parties that were the -- Looking Glass is acting as the applicant and lessy of the property, and the property owner is also noted that they agree to the agreement as well.
Commissioner Duncan.
One other one, in the final -- in the draft final order, it refers to Looking Glass School, which I assume is a different type of entity than just Looking Glass, the organization?
Yeah, the neighborhood association has been supportive, I think, the entire way through of the school use, and so this stipulates that it be the school that's using the site. It's a function of Looking Glass. I don't know that it's a separate entity, but it's clear that...
It has to do with them using it as a school versus some other Looking Glass function.
Right, as long as the school is there.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else here? Okay, I will now open the public hearing with those in support of the applicant. I have three requests to speak. They are all in support, one with conditions. First one is Larry Reed.
Either one or both.
Either one. Don't need stereo.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Larry Reed. I'm with JRH. We're the land use planning firm that wrote the initial Looking Glass zoning application. And we were initially hired to see whether Looking Glass Riverfront School operation could be located at this property. And we found that the GO, city's GO General Office zoning did not allow that, nor did the neighborhood commercial. And so, we proceeded with the zone change, and as the staff indicated, went through the hearings official public hearing, and then subsequent appeal. I represent Looking Glass Youth and Family Services, which is the lesor of the property. I also represent in that I have a fiduciary responsibility to the property owner, and I can represent that both Looking Glass School and the property owner are in agreement and concur with the recommendation as set forth by staff, and that unless there are questions, that ends my presentation, except maybe I could add to your question, Rick, and that is that Looking Glass School is the primary function in that it's high school, middle school type operation. There are some ancillary type uses that goes along with any school, like school nurse, counseling, those kind of things, which is part of a school operation. But also, I think the next speaker would be Craig Opperman, the Looking Glass Youth and Family Services Chief Executive Officer, that can answer more specific questions, if you have any, about the operation of the school. So unless you have questions, I'll step aside.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next speaker, Craig Opperman.
I'm Craig Opperman. I'm CEO of Looking Glass Youth and Family, and I basically just am agreeing with the situation we've got worked out, where all parties are going to allow us to operate our school there under this agreement, and it is the Looking Glass Riverfront School program. Since we were on the riverfront and now we're not, I don't know that the name will stay the same, but it will be our -- one of our main alternative school programs that we plan to operate there. The other thing I would clarify, I guess, is that we're coming in on a lease, but we have an option, and we really don't want to move again. This situation is a perfect example of why we never want to move again. And we'd like to eventually be able to own that property, but whether we own it or continue in a long-term lease situation, we plan to stay there for quite a while, and it's a really good building and situation for us. The other thing I'd add to that is the passion and commitment of Jefferson Westside Neighbors makes us want to stay there all the more. The fact that they're that invested and that concerned about their community and the very area that we're trying to locate in makes us want to be there. So I appreciate what this process has brought us all together through, you know, ups and downs, but also getting to a point of agreement where it's really, I think, a win-win for all of us. I'd also credit the owner for being very negotiable and working with everybody and getting this done, and I really give a lot of credit to city staff and all the help we've gotten from all of you and legal advice, and it's just been really good to have everybody working together to come to a good conclusion, which is where I think we are.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Opperman. Last speaker is Paul Conte.
Good evening. I'm Paul Conte, Chair of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors, and I submitted a letter that covers what I'm going to say in brief remarks, and then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Throughout the -- first, I should say that all of the board members were able to review the agreement, and all of them strongly endorsed it, so it has unanimous support of the executive board. I've also talked with both the property owners that own single-family houses across from the site, across West 12th Avenue from the site. They are in support. I've talked to the owner of the small, two small apartment complexes that are right across from the site. He's in support of the agreement, and I've talked to the owner of the Spring Tree Apartments, which is a large complex on 13th that's proximal to the east, and he's in support of the agreement as well. So as far as I know, there's nobody that's going to parachute in on this at the last moment and stir the pot, so I think everybody's pretty pleased with this. I want to emphasize that throughout this zone change process, the board and almost universally the residents and property owners have supported Looking Glass's desire to operate their school on the site. And we're glad that this resolution hopefully will come to pass, and we look forward to welcoming them as a neighbor and as a member of JWN, too. I should also mention, that reminds me that the -- although I don't have -- didn't talk to the board of the Unitarian Universalist Unitarian Church to the south adjacent, several of their key members had expressed support for this type of agreement as well. I also want to point out, and I was glad to hear what Craig had to say about our passion for our neighborhood, which is consistently throughout the process, also, we've been very concerned that uses not be allowed in that particular site, and we would be concerned about other sites as well, which would have a deleterious effect on the residential neighbors that are either adjacent across the street or in the nearby area. And so this solution that's been proposed, we think, not only satisfies the important needs of all the parties, but importantly as well, it complies with the law and that it is consistent with the policies that we raised, the issues on appeal in terms of Westside Neighborhood Plan, and so we support it both because it's right and because it's legal. And with that, I'll end my testimony and answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Conte. At this point, there are no speakers in opposition, so I don't know that if there's a need for a rebuttal, but if there is, you're welcome to speak again. Okay? At this point, then, I'm going to close the public hearing and the record and ask if the commissioners have any questions for staff that they would like to have to respond to before we start deliberations. Questions to staff? Sean.
This is an unusual way to resolve an issue, and I don't think, in my recollection as a planning commissioner, we've ever made a zone change contingent upon the current owner staying on the site. Could you give us a little bit of background about how that could be?
Yeah, you know, I actually was going to stop you, because maybe you want to reopen the record so we can have a more open discussion. Some of this is not in the record.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yes.
All right with that?
We'll reopen the record then.
All right. So, you know, there is some precedent for -- within Eugene for these types of actions. I mean, what came to mind for me is the city council's action in a Jefferson Westside area, I believe, where there was a zone change that would automatically take place when the city council adopts infill compatibility standards, for example, so an automatic reversion to a previous zone. And this is definitely unusual, but in the interest of the fact that we had opposition, you know, and appellant who appeared to actually be very supportive of what the proposal was, and for a very long period of time, the proposal's intended to stay in that location for a very long period of time. It's a particular site that is large enough and has enough public attention that staff felt like, although it's unusual and would not want to propose this as a regular way to deal with compatibility issues, that they could be flexible enough in these circumstances to keep track and to be -- to provide the notice that's required to Lane County, which is all it takes to change the zone back when they get actual notice of a change in use. One of the conditions, of course, is that the school is required to notify the city, but if for some reason, in however many years that is, that doesn't happen, the first condition allows the city, upon its own actual notice, to make the reversion formal. So it is unusual, but felt like a worthwhile endeavor for staff to kind of get into and try to bring the parties to agreement.
So can I ask a follow-up question, John?
Could this unusual precedent also be applied to, say, conditional use permits in the future?
It's not unlawful. It really becomes a question of the practical impacts it has on planning staff's ability to catch these things. I mean, it's the same reason that we get a little bit unnerved about doing a lot of trip caps, for example. It's the idea of having all these individual circumstances out there where city staff, you know, we have an obligation somehow to track this stuff and enforce it later. So, you know, we don't want to get too prolific with these situations, but they're not unlawful.
I'll be honest, the reason I ask is I've been involved with conditional use permits, where, again, no problem with the current use, but unhappy about the fact that the conditional use on the property allows other uses in the future upon change of ownership or project that might not be nearly as acceptable.
Well, yeah. I mean, in minor ways, you do this all the time, like a conditional use. It's different, but on the other hand, there are certain areas within a particular given -- well, more like a PUD, but on a particular given site where certain uses can take place, where something has to be public or some, you know, and it's -- it may or may not come to city staff's attention, but these are enforceable provisions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Drum.
Commissioner Duncan.
Along the same lines as what John was asking, it seems to me, and I'm a judge of support, I have no reason not to be, I just don't want it to come back at us at some later date. We've done it for a day, why not be, and so on. And I assume you've read this all, and I'm just curious, is there a way to make sure that we cover ourselves even better?
I think you're fine. I mean, I don't have concerns about this being precedent-setting to the degree that you're going to feel forced into doing it in another particular situation. These circumstances are unique for a number of reasons, but even if they weren't, you're not bound to do this in a future case. Staff came to our office because this one had some compelling circumstances. It seemed like everyone was in agreement, we just needed to figure out how to get there.
And then the final question, since if Looking Glass does buy the property and stays there for a significant period of time, what happens if the GO zone disappears?
We'll figure it out. We -- I've had...
Longer than four years from now?
It's not lost on the leadership to the JWN, but...
Well, I'm going to guess Paul won't be around forever.
Yeah, I don't know, actually.
Well, I truly mean if something, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now...
Right.
...GO doesn't exist, and all the watchdogs aren't around, and nobody remembers, how do you go to a different zone?
Yeah, I would anticipate that in that situation, we would call you, see what you remembered from the time.
I have an objective for every now and then.
I'm kidding. No, you know, we would look at historically what happened to the zone, what happened to the collection of uses that were within the GO zone, see what was most compatible, and it may involve a little bit of mediation to work with the neighborhood association particularly to see what, you know, what the intention is at that time. Circumstances could be very different, but frankly, that would be the ideal, because in that situation, it means that Looking Glass has been in the site for a very, very long time, and who knows what the neighborhood compatibility issues would be at that moment. So, yeah, we feel comfortable.
And for what it's worth, we've had some history with that in the past. In fact, the GO zone before that was the, what, RP zone or whatever it was, residential professional, which went to GO, and I think there were some references either in refinement plans or the things to that RP zoning district that eventually changed. So we had to deal with translation over time before. It wouldn't be the first time.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Ledig.
First, compliments to the applicant, the owner, and the neighborhood association and the planning and legal staff for carving this out in a unique way. I think it heads off a situation that we've dealt with with the Jefferson Westside Neighborhood in the past, where that R2 zoning was applied to a certain area, I think it was Area A, and then changed in a way that was contrary to what the neighbors expected, so I think this is a great way of solving this. But you mentioned something about Lane County getting noticed or reviewing this, Emily. What's Lane County's role?
That's the county recorder's office, essentially. That's where they keep track of the zoning.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, thanks.
Basically, what we do is always send them a notice of zone change decision once this becomes final, and they'd be sending them one now and then one later also, so...
I have Phase 1 UGB jurisdictional boundary on my brain.
Okay. Commissioner Drum.
Hi, too. I'm pleased that this could be resolved in an amicable way, and everybody's happy with it. Just reading through the appeal, I was struck, though, that while it was related to the application, a lot of the argument in the appeal didn't seem to be particularly related to the application. It was more of a legal argument, and I'm curious, you know, if there's opportunity for that to arise again. It seems...
Yeah. In fact, you know, this does remove -- it's an issue that's out there, and while it may not -- this allowed us to take care of this application without getting this application sort of caught up in those larger issues, but staff have made a commitment actually to address those issues and not wait for another particular application to come and bring those up. But, you know, Mr. Conte has urged the planning staff to look at those issues outside the context of a particular proposal, and my understanding is there's a commitment to do that. So you may see these issues come up in a more legislative way or in, you know, in other ways in the future, hopefully not connected to a quasi-judicial application.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ledig. Just, I guess, one last legal check on this. If we're in a situation where the owner and the applicant, the neighborhood are all in agreement with this, and there is some third party that would be opposed to this, would your legal opinion remain the same that we're on safe grounds going ahead with this?
Yes, but I would probably want to make more robust findings. I mean, Mr. Conte did a good job by going around and talking to the people that he thought may have opposition.
Right.
Yes, I think it's lawful. Knowing the general consensus that this was a good and supportable proposal, we didn't go way out of our way to use staff time to write major findings. I'll tell you that the two conditions, had we gone back in and had you modify the hearings officials' findings, these would be compelled under the two criteria that were called out in the appeal: compatibility or consistency with the metro plan and refinement plan.
Okay.
That's how these arise, and so we may have gone in and had more discussion around that, but...
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Belcher.
Forgive my stupidity, but if we're going to move in the direction you are proposing, would that be motion one or motion two?
That would be motion one.
And before making a motion, you want to close the record?
With no modification.
So I'll close the record. Again.
I see.
Any additional discussion or questions? Any motions? Commissioner Belcher?
Well, first, again, I'd like to thank all the players for doing such an excellent job of working their way through this process and reaching an amicable collusion, and I move that the Planning Commission affirm the decision of the hearings official for zone change approval for Looking Glass School, City File Z11-3, with the addition of the two conditions of approval as specified in the final order and adopt the attached final order.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it. Okay, discussion? Questions? Are we ready to vote? Those in favor of the motion as read signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously?
Actually, six, zero.
Six, zero. That's right. That's right, with one correct recusation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So...
So, well done. I think Mr. Oakes actually has a version you can sign.
Thanks, I appreciate y'all. I appreciate y'all being here, thank you.
So, for the record, Commissioner Randall is just rejoining the table.
Steve. It's like Paul and Larry are waiting for something.
I get that. Come here so seldom anymore, and wanted to see how you guys are doing with the next case.
I'm uncomfortable just sitting here.
Wait and leave. Thank you all.
There's a level of concern there, Larry and Paul.
We have to pack up the kids.
So you're afraid we're going to reverse it after we've... We can't do that. You signed it.
So the next item on the agenda is deliberation on the appeal of hearings official decision for AT&amp;T Mobility. Does staff have any new information to offer or answers to the questions as submitted earlier?
I was going to kind of catch you up on what's happened.
Very good.
And the time's been very cramped on this one, and I know coming out of the hearing, there was a lot of concern regarding the amount of time we had before the 120-day clock. Since that time, we've gotten a 21-day extension from AT&amp;T, and also the appellant, Mike Reed on behalf of the appellant, also agreed to that extension. So that puts the 120-day clock out to October 6th, so we have a little more breathing room to get through the voluminous record. And so we have, at this point, we have September 19th, the 11:30 to 1:30 meeting, set entirely for deliberations on this also. And so if it worked for you, we were going to -- I actually have the questions typed out here of what you provided at the end of the hearing. We're thinking of looking through these and seeing if there are any additional questions, make sure we capture these right, and then we were hoping to have you answers to the questions shoot for Monday, to have full answers to the questions, and then also anything else you think of, or issues that have come up in the meantime in looking through the record that have come up. So I was going to pass these around.
Did you say the 19th?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Probably.
Oh, and another item of issue was the, I guess, before we get into the questions, I want to make sure everybody also made copies of additional testimony that was provided at the hearing. There was multiple copies of all the items provided at the hearing except for the, oh, the list of authorities that was cited by AT&amp;T. And so I'll pass that around also. And this was submitted at the hearing just by just one copy, so.
Submitted by who?
By the, by Richard Bush on behalf of AT&amp;T. And then there were two pictures submitted by Bonnie Baker in the public hearing that were new evidence because they were new pictures. So those are being, those are not included in the record.
What we'll do is, your final order will include a specific rejection of those to comply with the state law.
Commissioner Belcher.
Did Ms. Baker have an opportunity to be apprised of why the pictures were being rejected or did she not ask?
Not at this point. Steve, you want to follow up with her to let her know?
Having asked the question, I feel some responsibility to let her know why.
We, um, staff, planning staff and I got together, I think, the day after the hearing and went through a number of things that I had noted. I think I mentioned at the end of the hearing that there were some statements made. I had some concern. They were outside the record. Staff substantiated that they were within the record and so the photos were the only thing that we had any concern left.
At this point, do you have a preference to run through each of the questions or if you're?
Just a quick question. Why is it that this would not be considered as new evidence?
It was submitted at the hearing.
At?
During the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You mean containing new evidence?
Yeah.
Legal citations are, they're not new evidence.
Okay, thank you.
And I think in, in general, when starting to, to look at the answers to a lot of the questions, some of them are going to, I think the answers will be a little limited. Some of them were somewhat broad in asking about legislative background where we can and where it's in the record, we'll, we'll point to where it's located in the record. And in most cases, there is, there's substantial information already in the record that we can help guide you to in addressing the in response to the questions, so.
Steve, I guess I, I would ask, perhaps take the liberty of expanding the question number two, how is the ambient noise standard applied? Specifically there, there's a number of different approaches made to the question in the hearing officer's report. And, and when you read our, our noise standard, it's very brief and very, I don't want to say insufficient, but I'll say it's very, very abbreviated. And it, it seems to have invited interpretation from different parties. Okay? And, and I guess I want to know what the city's position is on that. In other words, is 45 dB at the property line from a new, from a new noise source fulfill the code? Or does an increase in, in the, in the noise standard from a line, from a source that would push it over 45 total, the question? Or how does that impact when the ambient noise in daylight, this, I think daytime, they're saying it's, there was, seemed to be agreement that it was over 45 at nighttime? I'm a little confused by what the consultant said. He seems to be saying that it's 40 or less, but it's not clear to me. I, I can read it one where he says it's no problem, but I'm sure that's not what he was intending to say. So I guess I'm very, very interested in hearing, I just kind of wanted to expand on that question a little bit because to me it's, to me it's key here around the noise issue. I mean, there are other key issues here too that, that we also, I'm sure will be discussing. But that would be one that I'd have in terms of an expansion or additional delineation on that question. Commissioner Warrins.
I'm unclear if the equipment is to be buried, the noise-making equipment is underground or not underground because I've heard both. I read in the hearings official say it wasn't, or it was going to be buried underground. And then I read elsewhere where it wasn't. So what is, what is it?
Okay. And so I think the wording's a bit confusing because the, the proposal was to have it above ground. And then by denying the variance, it automatically is, the hearings official said it should be put underground. But it doesn't necessarily say it like that. It's, it's more because it's denied, because the variance is denied, therefore it's, it's required to be underground.
Okay. And then one-
Which is a little, reads it a little different in some places because of that.
Okay. And then I haven't been able to get through all of this yet either. Is there anything in the record about microwaves? Any testimony regarding microwaves being emitted?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be curious to pinpoint that too.
Okay.
Commissioner Belcher.
And it strikes me that the Federal Communications Act speaks directly to whether local communities can take concerns about microwaves into consideration. So in my questions, I would add a little bit on there. Number seven says, what are the concerns about the Federal Communications Act? And I would say, and applicability of, as this one. As I recall, when we made the ordinance, there was something within that act that said that local communities could not consider concerns about microwave impact. And then on number eight, does the city have mapping of ambient noise levels? And is it, is it, is it evidence we can consider? I suspect Mr. Oren was also correct there that even if the map existed, since it's not in the record, it doesn't, it can't be brought before us. But I still wanted to ask the question.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Leidig.
Yeah. Steve, I ask these questions a little bit more generally, more parallel to the way number one is stated. Is the state noise standard applicable? To the extent that it makes any difference, I, I would ask in number two, is the ambient noise standard applicable?
Okay.
And then number three is time of day applicable? And not tied to ambient noise in that number three. You see what I mean?
Okay.
And I just, that, I agree with Commissioner Mills. The definition is so abbreviated that there's testimony in the, in the record that talks about the ambient noise. I'm just trying to get a handle on how that might be applicable. And when I went through the code, I see that general noise standards that used to be in Chapter 9, if I've got the current code, have been transferred to Chapter 4.080. And I'm trying to get a sense of whether that more general noise standard is applicable and can give us some parameters to deal with because this, this particular noise standard is, as I read it, just for cell tower, uh, tower, telecommunications facilities. And so to the extent that the general noise standard is applicable, I'd be kind of interested in how that applies.
Okay.
Okay. And then to follow up on Lisa's question, afterwards, I was thinking too, if there's any legislative background that would help us understand the intent of requiring that this equipment be undergrounded? You know, was it, was it to deal with the noise? Was it to deal with the visibility of it? Why was that requirement imposed in the code? If you, if there's any kind of background that you might be able to help us with.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan.
And to follow up a little bit with that, it seemed to me that, and again, I ran through that portion of the code fairly quickly because I was trying to get ready for some things this evening. It seems to me that the rationale, I believe, to put the equipment underground was to take care of the ambient noise generated as one of the reasons. And if we were to uphold the hearings officer's decision regarding the denial of the variance, which means that if they were to build, it would have to be underground, does the question about ambient noise levels and so on, quote, pardon the pun, become mute at that point?
Okay.
Because it seems to me that if the variance is denied, that it has to go underground, and there's nothing really talking about noise at that point. We deal with all those, those arguments at some point later on.
Commissioner Byerly.
Just, I think this is more a locational question, but along my line of questions with the variances. Is there, is there somewhere in the application where it talks about why they're asking for a variance?
There is, but it's, it's spread out in general. It's not, mostly, and they even admit to it at one point that it's cheaper. And they've said that in the hearing also, yeah. But we can locate that.
Well, if it's not, you know, are there, well, there are two different, right? There's the PUD and then there's the CUP. Is it, is it in both places or is it in one more than the other? I'll go look for it.
It's, the undergrounding requirement actually comes from the, from the telecommunications citing requirements, which are, have links both in the, the PUD has a link to it and so does the CUP. So they both point to the same standard, which requires undergrounding unless you ask for a variance.
And are the applications similar in how they treat that?
Does one refer to the other? For that standard, do they just repeat within the application? Do they go through the whole thing twice or do they?
They, they go through the whole thing twice. They basically copy and pasted the findings from the PUD and put them in the CUP.
But they didn't substantially alter the CUP in that, in their rationale for that?
No, no.
Commissioner Warrins.
I could be mistaken, but I thought I also read that the reason why they, they didn't want to bury the equipment is because there was not enough room or adequate space to do that in, on the grounds? Is, is that correct?
That may have been asserted. I'm not, I seem to remember that from a testimony. I can, see if I can find that in the-
Okay. And then if so, what are they going to do to mitigate the lack of room if they're required to bury the equipment?
Emily, in the memorandum that you provided us before the hearing about the CUP and the PUD process, right at the end of the hearing, Mr. Bush for AT&amp;T cited 9.7305 as allowing us to consider multiple land use actions. And as I read the code, and again, I've got six, I mean, a June 10, 2009 code, if this is still the current one. It talks about the city may review multiple applications according to the highest applicable type. Maybe you could school us on where variances and PUDs and CUPs fall in order of pressing of importance.
I was actually pretty impressed that he located that in such a short period of time.
I was too.
Unfortunately, I don't think he understood quite how our two-phase applications work. Technically, a PUD in Eugene is a two-phase application, but it is two separate applications. So the tentative PUD, which you're considering right now, is a type three? So that's why it comes to you. You're the appellate body in the type three process. The second phase is a separate application. They pay a separate fee. They have a separate process. It's a type two. And it is a final PUD application. And there are technically two separate application procedures. A CUP is type two? It's type three. So to put that in some context, the co-provision that he referenced and that you're also talking about, it's based on state law. That requires us to allow an applicant who needs to bundle applications together to get the use that they're seeking. It allows that individual to have one process to consider it. And so we can't say, well, you've got a C, you know, you've got, you need a subdivision and a PUT. Well, subdivision's type two and PUD's type three. What that says is we'll do the subdivision along with the PUD, the higher type. It doesn't change, we, it, it wouldn't ever operate in the way that Mr. Bush suggested. So in other words, we're not going to have a second swipe at the CUP under that code section. CUP is one application, one procedure. And so you can't use that section to sort of revive a look at the CUP during the final PUD review.
Well, that's, that's where you said we would take some risk if we made the approval of the CUP contingent upon the final PUD.
Yeah, I think there, there is some risk. And it's based on a different area of law, which deals with deferral of decision-making.
Okay. Now, the final PUD being a type two, remind me that is that, that's not planning director approval, is it?
It is.
Oh, it is. Applicable to the hearings official?
Right.
Okay. Public hearing?
Opportunity for public hearing. So there's notice and then folks can submit written testimony. And then if it gets appealed to the hearings official, it's a de novo, brand-new public hearing.
Oh, it is. Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Belcher.
So if they're both type three, you want a type 3.2 because here's, I mean, which takes precedent in that case if they both have the same level of type?
They're both type threes. I mean, neither one, they travel together. You really, you don't need, I guess that section still has some operation because what it means is we won't make you apply for your PUD and then your CUP. We will let those go together. And it, the, the provision about going with a higher type really only has value when, yeah, when there's a type two and a type three traveling together.
There is a variance as well. Right.
Oh, right. And what's the variance? Okay. So we converted the variance, basically. We're treating it through the type three process.
That's where the difference in order is, is just one, two, or three, not, not this order that's listed here. Adjustment review is they had a conditional use permit historic.
Those are just alphabetically listed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
So even though a variance is a type two procedure, we get to deal with it because it's in a type three?
Because under that section, we bundled it and, and didn't make him go through a separate type two process and then the type three for CUP and PUD.
Commissioner Randall.
I think it, from, from my perspective, it seems like the biggest issue, at least in my mind, is that 45 decibel at the property line and how that's defined and when that's defined and those sorts of things. So that's going to be, I think, what'll be most interesting for me to find. What you guys get us is, is how, how that gets applied because the definition I, or at least the list that I see in the telecommunications section is very basic. And it really doesn't deal with time of day, ambient versus new and those sorts of things. And I don't know if getting to the bottom of that is new evidence or not.
It seems to invite a fairly bare bones interpretation the way it's written.
And, and that's-
That would be why, you know, but that, once again, gets subject to-
Well, and, and I guess that's where my struggle is in, in all of this, is if it isn't really defined here in my mind very well and we go through our deliberations, how do we, you know?
The standard way of approaching that would be, you know, you look at the text itself. And if you get very little from it, you look at the context. And maybe we, we can work together to try to provide some context. I think looking at the Chapter 4 provisions, that may be fruitful. Maybe there's something there to see how we deal with measurement in that section. Maybe there's some legislative history that we can pull in.
That was going to be my question, is if there's some legislative history of when that was adopted. that was adopted, and some of the discussion around that, is that new evidence, or is that still?
It may be, and if you find that you really, really need it, we can talk about how you would go about it, how about, about getting it. You have, unfortunately, a bit of a tight timeline to reopen the record, but, you know, we haven't had a real opportunity to dig in and see what we can find that, for context that I, that I know you can look at, so.
There is the adopting ordinance, which is.
In the record.
Page 407 of the record, which if you go to the back of the ordinance, there's the findings they have for the various, for housing, and it gives you a little bit more.
Page 407.
407 of the record. Remembered that right?
You're kind of sick if you did.
That's, that's less than halfway through it, though.
I know, that's a third of the way.
Why did you have that memorandum? That's because I took, I took it out at the hearing and, and forgot to put it back, so I had to figure out today where to put it.
That's spooky, Steve, that's spooky.
So, that, and that was, that was submitted by Bill Close, and so, that's, that's all in the record, and it's, yeah, there's the, the adopting ordinance and the findings at the back, it helped to give some.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, back to 45 decibels again. There seem to be two questions here, number four from Mr. Leiddick and number 11 from Mr. Duncan. Are you asking the same questions? Is there a difference there?
I think they're different. Same thing.
Might be the same thing.
Okay. And I would appreciate any, any illumination you can give us to the allegation from Mr. Close, that 45 decibels is 45 decibels, and it's like a trip cap, and he didn't say that, the other lawyer did. It's an interesting argument. I'd really appreciate hearing staff's.
Right.
Interpretation. But if you're already at 45, you can't do it there.
Right, and.
That's, yeah.
The applicant's attorney specifically stated that he felt that an interpretation like that would violate the federal law, so we'll try, try those together.
And hence my question about, is there any place in the city that would still be available, but we may not be able to answer that question?
I think probably not.
Because if it dominates the entire city, then clearly we've got.
I think we probably can't answer it, not, I don't think there's a place in the city.
Okay.
Commissioner Barley.
The hearings official talks about the, the different professional opinions related to the, the noise standard and how you're measuring sound. I seem to recall in other things that he's mentioned there's been a difference of opinion, and he hasn't gone, you know, it, it seems very random that he chooses to support one difference of opinion in this instance rather than another. Is there something different about the testimony that related him to do that, or does it seem random?
I think he, in, in this case, and it's in his discussion there, where he even notes that, I think, that we come to a case where there's two professionals, and that you can look at the same thing and come to different conclusions. But he was assuaged enough by the, by the, I guess it wasn't the appellant at the time, but Mr. Knoxon's testimony at the time, that he didn't think that it was met, that they had, they'd provided the evidence to meet it, and therefore, he provided that condition that they wanted to provide a new one. So, that's kind of where he landed on it. So, I think he, he, you know, I think he brought that up, where he, he talked about difference of opinion, but he did, I think, conclude that the, Mr. Knoxon was correct, and that he didn't feel compelled by the AT&amp;T's.
Right, I mean, and I think part of his argument is that AT&amp;T didn't, didn't address his issues when he said, you know, how do you respond to this? And I guess they, they didn't. But it's still, so, you know, he finds one more persuasive than another is really just what it comes down to. So, in other cases where he hasn't changed his opinion about it, it's because the other party didn't present a compelling enough argument to change his opinion.
Yeah, although, always remember when you think about, and the answer basically is yes, he has the authority to just be convinced, you know, and as do you, particularly when you're the initial decision maker. But you always kind of start with the idea that the applicant has the burden of proof. And I think that sometimes, beginning with that idea, you look to see whether they've said enough, and then you may look at that in light of what the opposition has said. And that may change the way you think about it, but essentially, it does come down, and reasonable minds most certainly can differ on, particularly when there's dueling experts. But I think that, in this case, the opposition raised more questions and brought up evidence that he found compelling enough to overcome whatever AT&amp;T had provided. And so, they hadn't met their burden, considering that. So, for you to ask whether that was an error, it may be. You may find that actually you felt AT&amp;T's evidence was compelling and was not overcome by the opponent's testimony, in which case, you would determine that the hearings official erred.
Commissioner Leiddick. Yeah, a couple of points, but on that one, there was, there were at least a half a dozen items of testimony presented by the applicant's sound noise engineer and Mr. Knoxon. Mr. Knoxon got the last piece entered on July 13th. When was the record closed for the hearings official?
It's in your staff report.
I, I'm just wondering if AT&amp;T had an opportunity to respond to the appellant's last draft, or last report.
So, the applicant always has final rebuttal.
Yeah, but.
And I'm not sure if they took that, so, okay, on July 13th.
Because the applicant had submitted a letter on July 12th, and then Mr. Knoxon's followed the day after.
Okay, and then the, yes, and so, there was Mr. Knoxon's, and then there was, the only thing AT&amp;T submitted after that time was the email on page 96 from Mr. Hile, which I don't think talked about.
I don't think it did.
July 20th, I mean, they certainly could have.
Okay, yeah, okay, that, that helps. July 20th, the record was closed?
It looks like that's, that was the applicant's final submitted.
Yeah, and then on a Wednesday, so.
Okay.
Probably that day.
Yes.
Okay, that helps, about a week later. And the other part of it is, and Commissioner Belcher brought this up at the hearing, Mr. Close, if I understood it correctly, was, was suggesting that all sound emanating from the property at the property line needed to be considered, even if it was property originating off of the property, of traffic noise and so forth. The applicant, as I understand it, is suggesting that, no, you just measure the noise that's coming from the machinery that's applicable to the application. What I'm wondering is, is if, again, in chapter four, or in any of this background, that you can tell us, is there a third alternative? And that would be to measure noise emanating from the property itself. Now, the applicant is not the property owner, but, but as I understand it, the tower is going on a bigger piece of property, the golf course. To the extent that there are other activities generating noise on the golf course, that once they accumulate, can be measured at the property line, is that something for us to consider? You see what I mean?
Yes.
There's the all noise from many, everywhere, and noise just from the application equipment, and then noise generated from the property that is under the property owner's control. But I'd like to know about that.
Okay.
Commissioner Warrens.
Well, yeah, a follow-up on that, I mean, and then the neighbor that's right bordering the golf course where the tower would be, what about if they're mowing their lawn? I mean, how does that play into the, to the decibel level? Get really loud.
And a leaf blower going at the same time.
We have an ordinance about that.
And a ballgame.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I did look at the findings, and on page 421 and 422, there's a sentence that says, "The telecommunications ordinance established more restrictive standards for height setbacks and noise for transmission towers located in low-density residential districts." So, there may be something there that's illustrative, I don't know. I'm not going to say what it means to me. I'd like to hear what you guys think.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I'd like to maybe suggest at some point, we move the conversation past noise for a moment, and talk a little bit about some of the other arguments that were made by the appellants. And the ones I'm thinking of specifically, deal with, one is the, the fact that we could just make a general ruling that was suggesting that it's not an appropriate, I'm misquoting them, so please correct me, that we can just basically turn down, because it's not appropriate for that area. And not based on noise, but based on everything about it. That's kind of what I'm remembering. And the thing that I'm remembering specifically is when we get to the idea of the 75-foot tower, that is not, in no way is any stealth applied to it. And I believe there was some comments made at one point by the applicant about the, about stealth. And I'm not recalling exactly what that was, but my, my, my question to, to staff is, have we required stealth before? Have we considered it? Can we require stealth? I mean, I'm just thinking about, well, once we get past the noise issue with the neighbors, we're going to go to the next issue, which is going to be the tower itself.
A follow-up on that, is that, is stealth even a, I mean, I think of fighter planes with stealth, you know, that kind of stuff. Is there, is that a common industrial engineering definition? Or did somebody just think that's a neat word to stick in there?
It, it has been used in, in the telecommunications industry.
It has, okay.
But it certainly is, is not to infer invisible necessarily. I'll get, I mean, examples of, and I don't know if this is stuff I can even mention, I don't know if it was in the record, if there was examples discussed before.
The Masters Tower example is in the record.
Okay, so, the Masters Tower example went to more of a monopole design, which looks like a flagpole, basically. Doesn't have any, it's, and all the antenna apparatus are inside the pole, so there's no, that triangle on the top of antenna array is inside the pole. So, it looks like a flagpole without a flag. Let me just give you a visual idea. That's one. Some refer to that as a stealth design. Certainly, you can certainly see the poles still, but it's certainly less obtrusive. And the other is masking them to look like other things, like trees and so forth.
You still have the height. You still have to get up there, though, I believe.
I think, just to forecast, one of the thing, I mean, we can talk about some of this, one of the things that becomes problematic when you have a record that's closed, when you talk about these issues, is those designs may require adjustments in the design of the facility, and we don't know if something's doable. So, if you think, if you had to think about, I'm just forecasting this, if you had to think about a condition that dealt with that, you're not going to know the answer to say, will it work for this particular?
Good point.
So, that, that is a limitation, I think, of the record right now, that's going to make that prospect a little more difficult.
Commissioner Leiddick. Yeah, on this, as I recall, the hearings official kind of put off the whole screening issue to a, to hiring a landscape architect and working with the neighbors to try to come up with something acceptable. I guess, like some help from you all to understand if putting it off like that is standard practice for us in these kinds of things.
It's a good question.
So, the staff didn't initially propose a landscaping process or a condition, and then the hearings official took it really a step further and made it, made it more open-ended also, but really in a kind of a work together and figure-it-out kind of way, so.
Just my recollection of the PUD appeals that we've had, I mean, seems to me that those plans come with the number of trees and exactly where they're going to be when they come to us, not, not wait till phase two to finally decide that.
I'm just kind of.
Yeah, I can't.
With the putting it off, so I need some help with that.
Yeah, was that put off until final PUD?
That was, I guess, put off till final PUD.
Okay.
And would, would then also, I guess, be under the same issue you have if, if that was relied for also in, well, that's actually a PUD criteria that he provided that for, so.
So, it relates to my memo, where it's a two-phase appeal process. And so, that is the time, I, we do have concerns when you're putting off a decision to what appears to have some discretion, to a time when there's no opportunity for public input. It's not fair, and it's not allowed, but.
Too early or too late.
But in the two-phase process, that's where the law has said it's okay. There's another phase at which there's an opportunity for a hearing, and people will get notice, so you can postpone it, so long as, like Steve said, it's part of this, it's part of the PUD, and the PUD is the application for which there's two phases.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing you say is, for the PUD part, that's okay. Hire a landscape architect, public review later on, and.
Right, we'll deal with it at final.
And, and I did my question about whether there's some kind of guidance or precedent or context that we have for screening, it just got annotated as towers, but I'm thinking of power line poles, or radio antenna, or anything else. Again, I'm looking for.
Recycling bins? Don't we have that?
Yeah, just how we address some of these other tall features like this.
They're not tall.
They're not tall.
Yeah, recycling bins aren't.
Not so much.
And one more? Because things like the, the noise criteria seem to be so abbreviated, is a good term, thinking about, in this specific case, should we decide to put something back on the hearings official or back on the applicant? But also looking at the next telecommunications tower, at the next golf course, or the next playground, is it within our purview to help better define what is meant by, for example, 45 decibels at the property line?
If you apply that standard, you know, if you manage to somehow dispose of this case, this matter, without getting to that.
Yeah.
Then you don't have any obligation, or, or, I mean, it would be helpful, too. But if you actually apply that standard, you actually need to provide a clear definition.
Okay, and then it becomes a precedent for the future?
It should. I mean, if you decide later that you were wrong, you're allowed to do that, but you really should proceed to try to be consistent with your own past decisions. Yeah, and, but in order to make, in order, you can't just say, yeah, it's been met, or no, it's not. We're actually going to have to push you to come up with the, the definition that you're applying.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll try to help you. I may not be there, but Steve.
We're forward to the challenge. You're one of those things you have to remember 10 years from now, how we apply it. Okay. Commissioner Belcher.
Going back to stealth, I, I'm, it would be helpful to know to what degree we can require it, and if we do, with what specificity. I mean, do we say it should be a palm tree? Do we say it should be a fake Doug Furd? Do we, what, what options do we really have here? It strikes me that stealth is an awfully broad term, and if we don't say what it is, and it's up to the applicant to decide how to apply it, my feeling at this point is it is kind of difficult, if not at all possible, to apply some sort of stealth requirement without, with enough specificity for it to mean anything. So, getting some feedback from you would be really helpful.
Okay, and I know there is in the record, the, in the public here, the initial public hearing, there was a lot of information provided about stealth design. The applicant actually responded to that with somewhat of a, with a stealth proposal very loosely, but that didn't go anywhere, so. I think they talked, said something about a palm tree, but the, the height, they said the problem would, would be that the height would then be exceeded, so they, you know, kind of explained the, the problems with the stealth design.
Yeah, they needed the top 10, 15 feet to be free to be able to transmit, as I recall.
So, I'll, I'll highlight those areas where they talk about that also.
Commissioner Randall.
Well, kind of getting back to the landscaping issue, in the conditions on, on number two, and I think Randy kind of mentioned this a little bit, too, it, it seems like the hearings official just says that the landscape architect shall work directly with the landowners of the adjoining properties to design screening that meets those owners' needs. properties to design screening that meets those owners' needs. That seems pretty vague to me, too. I mean, who decides what meets their needs? Is that something that gets deferred to that second phase, but then is it past the point of public comment? And, you know, how does that -- because that seems, that seems really vague to me as far as how you determine what meets the owner's needs. I mean, you know, the owners say, well, I don't like it, so it doesn't meet my needs. You know, unless you screen the entire tower, it's not going to meet your needs. And it's kind of open to that. And that kind of gets back to, you know, the other condition, and not to belabor the noise issue, but just that on Number 6 on the findings, or conditions, excuse me, shall provide a revised noise, prior to final PUD approval, shall provide a revised noise study demonstrating compliance. But if we haven't really defined what compliance is, then how do you, how do you get there?
Commissioner Barley.
Not that I think the noise is irrelevant, but for me, a lot of it relates to the variance and whether it was appropriate to even apply for a variance, and since it's lumped together with these other things, it seems hard to sort out what, you know, what the appropriate response is when you also then have to deal with a PUD and a CUP, and I don't, I don't know that this is really anything that would be, you know, related to the hearings official airing, but just in terms, like procedurally, you have maybe the cart before the horse by trying to lump them all together, and so it creates a chain reaction of consequences. And I'm not, I don't understand how to sort those out very clearly, you know, because I keep thinking, well, you know, if it wasn't really, you know, if the issue is the variance got denied for whatever reason, then that sets up the whole chain of, okay, so now you've got this landscaping issue, and if you put it underground, then that changes the sound thing and everything else. You know, I don't know if there's a way, I almost feel like if we have a little table or something, or, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's just the nature of being, you know, in this, this multi-layered process is sort of difficult to sort out. For me, it would help to really understand what the process and procedure is related to variances to, I don't know, they're all kind of tied together, so I don't know.
Commissioner Warrens.
If we decide to throw this thing back on the hearings official, and we have to have an explanation of why we're doing that, could we not then take some of the appellant's reasoning that we, I mean, you know, if we think that their arguments are compelling enough, use those? Or do we have to get, research this separately on our own as a planning commission? And as I've heard, that the language for the decibel level is aviated, I mean, I'm just trying to get clear on how...
How that would work.
How we're going to, you know, support our decision.
Well, the, I guess the first thing is, in order to actually remand it back to the hearings official with some instruction, you would need, we would need a major extension, new 120 days, essentially. So you may or may not have the ability to do that.
Okay, well, what if we wanted to deny the thing? We still have to have this explanation.
Yeah, you need to explain why, and you most definitely, I mean, can rely on the, you know, obviously, you can't go beyond what the appellant has raised. You can only look at those arguments, and so presumably you'd fall back on those. And if you find them compelling, then, you know, absolutely, that's what they're here for. They're here to try to convince you that what they're saying is what you should decide, so...
Okay, all right. And then, as far as the height of this thing, I, you know, I don't even know what the design would look like. We haven't seen that. We've heard suggestions of a flagpole, but, I mean, I've seen some of these towers, and they're pretty big and awful looking. Are there solar setback standards with this?
No, not that apply to the tower.
Okay. I mean, technically, it could shade out somebody's garden.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Belcher.
Act 45 decibels. Suppose we decide that the 45, the code says if it's at 45 decibels already, we can't build it there. And let's suppose that goes against the telecommunications ordinance because it makes it difficult, if not impossible, to site in the city. Can we do that and then create the need to adopt a different ordinance in order to meet the telecommunications ordinance?
Um, could you?
That's a recourse.
My advice would be, don't do that. I mean, the code provisions, we know, were adopted to make sure that the city was in compliance with the federal law. So I think that what I'm able to find on the federal law may actually help you in the way that you interpret the code. Does that make sense? The, the timing of our adoption, Steve, if you can speak to this better, but it related to the 1996 Federal Telecommunications Act.
Right, it was in response to the act being passed, so we had to have local provisions to respond to that new law.
So we were intending to implement it, so, I mean, to the extent that you're thinking of an interpretation that would be in clear conflict with the federal law, that's probably not the interpretation that was intended.
But are you saying there may be, within the federal law, a better definition of that 45 decibels?
Yeah, maybe.
And how that's arrived at?
Yeah, I don't know. Jerry Lids in our office actually worked on those provisions, and we have staff expertise in telecommunications and planning, it's Steve Nystrom.
I don't know if it's me, but...
Doesn't come up often enough, but we may find something to that effect, and I think it's part of the reason we didn't want you guys to get too deeply into deliberating on those, on those issues until we've really had time to provide answers to some of these questions.
But is it not possible that when we adopted the first ordinance, we erred in that?
No, it's not possible, no. It's certainly possible, but frankly, if you have a provision that requires interpretation to the degree that I believe this one does, you know, my request would be try to provide an interpretation that doesn't violate federal law.
And for what it's worth, there was quite a bit of activity from the telecommunications providers as we were moving through this, watching every step we took, and frankly, arguing many things that we considered, so it was hotly debated as we were going through the adoption process.
But I'm a little uncomfortable saying the code says this, because otherwise it would be in conflict with federal law. I mean, it's hard to believe, but I do believe...
For now, I think, let us, let us work back through that, but I think that's what makes this appeal more difficult, because it is, it has an additional layer of requirements that we normally don't find. So when we're dealing with things like, you know, height issues and compatibility issues and noise issues, normally we're in a realm that we can kind of understand. Here, there's a different element that's been added to that. Not that those other things aren't important still, it's just there's one more variable that we have to navigate. Let us help you a little bit with that piece, rather than speculating tonight about, you know, where that leads us.
Well, I guess I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, I understand what you, your concern, right, right.
Commissioner Warrens.
If we expand on the language of the code for the decibel level, so that we have a better interpretation of it to make our decision, is that, is that new evidence?
No, there's, there's a lot of, or I think, almost every conceivable definition of that section's already been, is in the record, so I think that shouldn't be a problem, there's...
Okay. And it's not. I mean, you, you're actually, you're going to have to make some difficult interpretations here, and you are allowed to come up with them on your own.
Only question is appealability.
Make a lube of proof.
Commissioner Leidig.
The reason, the reason that I'm curious about the background regarding the undergrounding goes to this, the variance issue that Heidi keeps coming back to and the need, the word obviates.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it was Mr. Close was making the argument that it, going back to the 45-decibel thing, that, that bringing the, the equipment above ground would have to be done in such a way that it eliminates the need to even comply with 45 decibels. And I guess I'm reading this, that it, it would obviate or do away with the need for compliance with the undergrounding or the setback requirement itself. So some help in interpreting exactly what this refers back to would be useful to me. I'm just thinking that the, the deci, the noise level criteria stands by itself and isn't particularly linked to this in some way. I just want to see what you want.
I think that's a reasonable way to read it.
Okay.
The hearings official did link it, you don't know, so, and that was the read he took of it, was that by meaning that you could, and then conditioned that it'd be met in the future.
Yeah.
Well, what I can try to do as part of that and, and read to that, well, in relation to variances, provide kind of a, again, back to her, but maybe a abbreviated summary of what the hearings official said and how that's linked to the other code sections, because that is a challenging portion of it.
For what it's worth, you know, in puzzling through this, we will try to provide you, we'll try to walk you through it in a way that makes most sense, but I think that as you look at it, the way that personally, I have to start with the variance. And so I think Commissioner Barley is right, that you kind of have to start there, and whatever you determine there, just as the hearings official did, it really reads into a great deal of the analysis under other criteria. So probably, my guess is that we're going to ask you as a group to entertain the variance issue first.
Yeah.
Is that what you're, what you'd likely think?
Yes, yes, that's definitely one of the, it has its tentacles in many other places.
It's gotten quiet.
You're not satisfied?
Do we have any other questions for staff on this topic?
In between now and next week, if you have any other mind, feel free to...
Okay.
We might not have all the answers by our next meeting. Try.
I'm not taking this up again until the 19th.
Correct.
Oh, then we will.
Yes, yes, we should. We'll, I'll try to have you answers early next week.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So are we, I believe we're done with that agenda item for now, then. With that, I guess we're to the point where I'd ask you if there are any items from staff.
And from us?
Nope. Any items from other commissioners?
I am not going to be able to be at Monday's 11:30 meeting, so there's going to be a quorum here.
I won't be there.
You won't?
I'll not be there.
I'll not be there.
Sounds like not.
Well, it's four, you're right.
Which meeting were we talking about?
The 12th.
No quorum.
So I think we already, do we know that already?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, no problem.
So then that got moved to the 19th?
Right.
Oh, right. That's why we're the 19th and not the 12th, because we...
And what time is it?
11:30 to 12:00.
Yeah, I'm still showing up like Ellen.
11:30 to 12:00.
It's like, wow, we got a meeting every week this month.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Okay. Any other items?
I have an off-the-record item.
Off-the-record item, so I should adjourn first?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
When are we getting, when are we getting together? Oh.
On the 8th.
The Housing Subcommittee, yeah, Thursday. Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.